It's 4:00 PM, everyone. I'd like to welcome you to the June 24th regular council meeting. And we'd like to call this meeting to order. And I'd like to begin by acknowledging that this meeting is taking place on the unceded traditional territory of the Yakanutti within the Tanaka Nation. Before we start, I'll amend the agenda. Want to welcome Bev Caldwell back.
Hey.
She's come and gone many times. But it is happening. You can see now, first hand, maybe this after these meetings have become since I've been the mayor. We'll help fix that, sure. So I would like a motion to adopt the agenda. There are several small additions, but I think they're within the published agenda. Is I correct?
We just have one amended, one amendment to put under corporate administration regarding the summoning party. So that will be part of our.
Okay, so a motion to adopt the agenda as amended. Council Baldwin, second to Council Holland, all in favor. Motion is carried. And then a motion to adopt the minutes of the regular council meeting of June 3rd, 2025. Council Dumas, second to Council Aries, all in favor. Motion is carried. I will then go to our mayor and councillors' reports, which will be up on the screen momentarily.
Wait, what is your vision?
Okay. Um, I could say better now. On the 5th of June, I attended the Creston Valley Services Committee meeting. On the 11th of June, the Border Mayor's Alliance meeting. On the 19th of June, the Regional District of Central Kootenay. I also participated on the 20th of June at the meeting with our MLA. And in the evening, spoke at the grad ceremony. Council Aries.
Yeah, on June 17th, I was at the Creston Valley Library Board Meeting. And then on June 18th, the Creston Valley Housing Corporation. And today, we had EIP meetings, so there'll be a report sent.
Councilor Dumas.
On, oh, on June 4th, I attended the Regional District of Central Kootenay Water Services Committee. And then June 7th, Council Aries and I participated in Dash for Traffic.
Oh, right.
And then on June 13th, I attended the Chamber of Commerce AGM with Council Holland. And June 18th, the Housing Corporation. And June 11th, the Creston Valley Regional Airport Society meeting.
Okay, we'll move to Council Holland.
Yes, June 13th, I attended the Creston Valley Chamber of Commerce AGM. Well, with Council Baldwin, Susan and Jimison.
Very good.
Sorry, it was very.
You're Baldwin. See, we're missing. It's okay. Um, just on June 8th, attended graduation ceremony for the Army Cadets down at Applewood Band. It was really good. Took some video there. 13th, Kootenay's Regional Hospital District. Highlight there is we're massively over budget on the FW Green Long Term Care Home. It's $75 million over budget. So there's some rural patients there to have it there. Then Central Kootenay Regional Invasive Species, C-Kiss Group. I think my only comment there is they're going to need some money. So we're trying to create some kind of awareness thing where taxpayers generate more enthusiasm for funding it because they're going to start on us here. There we go.
Council Eisler, any reports?
Just on June 8th, attended the Army Cadets Ceremony with Keith. On June 10th, it's the Creston Valley, or sorry, June 11th, it's the Creston Valley Trails Society AGM. And let's see here. Then also on June 18th, the Joint Resource Recovery Committee meeting. And in the evening, the Trails Society had a regular monthly meeting. And that would be it, and those reports are coming.
Thank you, everyone, for your reports and your participation in North Health. I would then ask that the verbal and written reports of council be received. Moved by Council Holland, second to Council Hodgson, all in favor. Motion is carried. And we will then now go to a motion to resolve ourselves into committee of the whole. Council Aries, second to Council Eisler, all in favor. Motion is carried. And so we'll begin the committee of the whole meeting with the delegation from Enduring Care Solutions regarding Enduring Care Solutions Program Poll Review. So you're welcome to the podium to address us and provide your information.
But we don't get there. We don't. We don't. We have questions to start with.
So my name is Erica. This is.
I'm Tanya.
This is.
I'm Alex.
We're Enduring Care Solutions. Tanya is an addiction counselor. And Alex is one of our successful clients that we have. So before we kind of start with the slideshow, I just want Alex to give, Alex said, look at me, the opportunity. Are you okay?
Yes. They're still in. I speak. Do you want to share or do you want to?
No, I saw her a little bit. I came from the streets of Edmonton. I was there on the streets for both six months before I came back here. My parents live here, you know. I actually had my son move back with them because of our life situation in Edmonton just wasn't safe and it wasn't the best for him. So I had him move back here with them. And then I went back and I was still on the streets. I was still on the streets here. I was part of the problem. Just in and out and sleeping on people's couches and just not healthy. I barely remember a lot of those days, to be honest. I don't even remember meeting Erica. Someone referred, I think it was my family, I don't even know, but I'm just really grateful that they did. I've stumbled a couple of times where these guys have picked me up and caught it right away, even though I tried to hide it, but I was good at it. I got healthy enough to have my son back. Asked for him back, well, I didn't really give him up, but I wanted a better life and I just didn't want him to see me like that. I've gotten housing, I've gotten food, I've gotten shown different programs that keep me busy, but it's done me a garden, which is one of my passions too. Yeah, I was there as well, but that's one of my passions and it's definitely keeping me busy. Tanya is, I went two days a week with her horse counseling hikes, just talks or she puts me to sleep with some of her. Weeks teaching me things to help me relax at night. It's just the whole team has been incredible and I wouldn't do it without them. And I'm really grateful.
So she, she's a part of her therapy to stand up here and exist. Yeah, bring awareness, like she's an inspiration to me. She's definitely a big inspiration. So now Alex is doing, as you heard, she has her son back. She's got housing, she's got all these things. And now we are trying to give back to the community that she was from, you know, the living on the streets, the drug life that, you know, involved with our CMP, all of those kind of things.
Yeah, I was in raids of everything.
All the raids in town, most of the raids in town. Alex was a part of that. She was in the houses, all that kind of stuff. And so, but now Alex is a huge inspiration for other people that were her friends on the streets. So we had a big idea of how we could give back instead of with drugs and trauma and, you know, all that.
Enabling.
Kind of enabling, yeah. How could we do that? So Alex's kind of idea was to build a great big community garden. Alex runs the garden. There is many, many of our clients that go every day, but Alex is kind of in charge of what was planted and what is coming. And then that way, we can give back to some of her friends that are still on the streets.
It's finding the purpose. Don't interject. It's a process. Like these people are just like, what do I do? Who am I? Let's say, who, who am I? Who am I? And having that purpose is really empowering. So I think our company basically is about empowering us as a community, us as individuals, our authenticity, and how can we group together and move forward?
Absolutely.
Yeah, we want to like not just give people the food just to help them in a sense, of course, but also we want to do the tanning parties at the end and show them how to do this kind of thing and just be community together. I've got a couple of my friends that have already signed up to the program or just starting or even just thinking about it. And I just keep on them and just they see how well I've done it, how good I'm doing and how different I even look. Yeah. Yeah.
A big difference. It's absolutely.
I've been using hard drugs since I was 15, every day. The longest I've ever been sober was when I was pregnant and breastfeeding. And even then, I still wanted it. So just the breath like that I've given myself and been a part of, but I didn't really know any different. So just showing people that there is differences and there's a rainbow at the end. Play it, I guess. Right?
Yeah, absolutely.
They, they, they make it your program, right? Like whatever, like what worked for me isn't going to work for everybody else. But they have so many options and like, well, if you want to do something, they make it happen. If they, if you don't have any money, make sure you find somebody or find, help you find it or stay on the phone with you. I've got healthcare, I've got mental healthcare and I've been waiting for and trying for it for years on my own, but no success. So these guys make it happen.
Yeah, so that's a little bit. Alex is one of our big success stories, but we've actually, we started the program on October 1st. But we were working with another individual and he just hit his one year. He just had a huge celebration. And he just hit his one year mark as well. So we had a big celebration for that and Alex was lucky enough to attend it.
And he's been an inspiration for me too.
Cool.
Yeah, so we all work together and then we give them the opportunity to start sponsoring others once they get to success. So that's a little bit, there's one success story. She really wanted to come and speak from, you know, herself. And that is a definitely a big part of her therapy to, to join. So she had, she did join her, despite of her.
We appreciate your courage.
Fantastic. I don't want you to come up with two and hand it to the shirt. Okay, I don't even know how to work this thing. Is it this? The two buttons going back and forth? Oh, okay, perfect. Okay, so we're a comprehensive mental health and addiction recovery service. Right now, we're serving the Creston area, but recently we have been, thank you. Recently, we've been called out to very many communities. We have recently had a few people that have gone through the whole court system. So we've been mandated by multiple people or multiple different things for people to come to us through mandation of that, with the judge. And we had a big conversation, it was so beautiful. So we have a lawyer that is partnered with us. So he's a criminal lawyer, which he's been absolutely fantastic in supporting these guys. He will reach out if they have any questions or, you know, one of our things is lots of them have done really bad crimes in the past. So we want to make sure that we have all of those met with so that they can go and live a happy, healthy life in the future. So Mason is our lawyer and he is absolutely fantastic and works very closely with us as well. Yeah, let's see. Is the move over? Let me just point it towards that one.
Went to the computer.
Here we go.
When you look away, it goes up.
Mission is to support individuals and families on their path to recovery with compassion, dignity, and evidence-based care. So we walk alongside our clients, empowering them to reclaim their lives. So with that, we, we also worked with the families. So, you know, these guys get their own team, but the families get a team as well. So what happens is we are making sure that both of them are healing at the same time. So it's able to, you know, we'll set goals with our clients and then we set goals with the family. And so we set these boundaries and they each have their own team to know how do we deal with this, right? How, where do we put our boundaries up? How, where are they at at this stage in the game? And then we talked a lot about education with them too, on, to try not to trigger them to get back. Because a lot of the time, there's anger. You can, yeah. So she had no longer really spoken to the family. It's been many, many years that it's been term with. Just for one example, and I'm going to use Alex, and now she has weekly family dinners. She's been across the lake or was going across the lake, you know, cat, family cabin, first time in a long time. And they are reconnecting.
So it went from one hour dinners to a couple hours of visiting. They're able to do that kind of thing.
Yeah, yeah. Are you chiming in or isn't he? Okay. So to create, our vision is to create a safe, inclusive, and holistic network of care for individuals facing mental health and addiction challenges, especially in unserved rural and remote areas. So working with Mason specifically, he is all the way across the West Kootenays. And he has told us there is nothing, there is nothing like our services. And it's a huge thing. So Mason has tried to get us, like at this point, he's like, you need to come this way. So go to Nelson Castle Guard Trail. He's really rooting for us to head that way. But we love.
Get this here.
We want to get this here first. We want to get it established here. But last week, we were actually called to Cranbrook and they wanted us to put on a big presentation there. We got phone calls on, we met on Friday and we got phone calls on Monday morning that they're ready to fund us and find us a building. Like it's just one of those, like we were like, we're, you know, we want to start here. That was our goal. But we know that we're super needed throughout all the gens.
I grew up in the West Kootenays and that's where my, I'm going to grow up there because that's where I call me started. So I know how bad it is and how rough it can be over there. And I've just heard this called worse. So I think it'd be huge to go over there.
Yeah, yeah. So obviously, we're founded in Preston, BC. Right now, we operate as an outreach. We are 24 hours a day, seven days a week. So there's probably, I think there's twenty-something employees. We've got two addiction counselors, one being Larry Banks. So he's one of our addiction counselors as well as Tanya. We are not just here, like it was. So what happens is we don't just sit in an office and they come to us. We are on streets, we are down there. We will.
We don't dress like this.
No, we don't. We're normal.
It wakes me up, even though we tried to lock her out a couple of times.
Yeah.
So there's ways you have to make sure I'm okay and, you know, she's by the means of my last detox. It might better, you know, and they don't care if you swear at them. I get other therapy no matter what. And so.
Yeah, it helps you feel normalized.
It does.
It's normal. And I think that's the big part is that all of this is a watchmate for the community that this is, well, we can't just go like this anymore. Well, we can, but it's not working. So we're here to present, like what can we do? How can we get funding? Yes, we're working with CLBC.
Yeah.
But we're, would you say it's a little bit slower than.
Yeah, we applied for CLBC as of October, in the beginning of October, and we're just still waiting. So, you know, yeah, it's a long, long process. It can take up to like a year and a half to two years. Although I think we are moving along. We even had social workers out of Cranbrook office that were phoning head office for CLBC in Vancouver and said, like, get going, like, we need this. And, you know, they're like, we sped it up and, you know, so it's been months and we just got the thing that it's finally in the final stages of review, but we don't know when that'll happen. So we do accept private pay, we also expect, accept ICBC. And then we also have private insurance companies, so that support us as well.
Yeah, I think that that comes as housing, right?
It's housing and lots of the individuals who are living on the streets are falling for their crimes. So we're not able to, so Tanya and I are like very, we're very compassionate about what we do. So there are other kinds of, we just go down and do it for free. So we're like, that's it, these people need us, we're, we're down there, we're doing this, right? It's going to come back to us in the end. And that's kind of how we look at it all the time. So we have individuals that are on income assistance and we're like with new forms, right? Like, so we do have the outreach, we have support workers, we've got HCA, so healthcare assistance. We've also got nurses and the nurses are all volunteer at this point too. So if somebody, yeah, like they, but they're ready to go, right? But, you know, they go to the streets, they remove the stitches, they are doing wound care, they are continuously, you know, we'll take a picture of something and send it to them and like, what does this look like? Do we need to go to the hospital kind of thing? And they're very much involved in it.
Yeah, maybe go to the hospital a couple of times.
Yeah. So our court programs right now, we, we do detoxes. So right now, if it is a, needs to be a medical detox, because we do have a medical team as well. If it needs to be a medical detox, we will do it up at the hospital. We are really connected with Colleen. I don't know if any of you know who she is, but she's a social worker at that. So if I have a detox that needs to be medical, I will contact Colleen and she will clear us a bed. We go up there, we do the detoxes, they do the medication pieces of it. Lots of the street drugs are not needed medical treatment. So therefore, as Alex was just explaining, we do them in their house. Once we get them stable, we get them housed. We've done it in a hotel room. No, Alex.
Oh, were you?
Yeah. Yeah, so we, we've done it in hotel rooms as well. So we are partnered with a few different hotels within the community.
That's awesome.
Yeah, it's a very good one, yeah. So we have the outreach, supports, and counseling. So there is, they don't need to come to us, we go to them. Life skills and employment readiness. We have, we have paired up with multiple businesses around the community. We have very extensive liability and all of that. So what we do is with the other businesses, we're like, we'll hold full responsibility. So if you can employ them and something happens, we'll be there to deal with that scenario. So it's a little bit low risk for them. And then they do it. So then they kind of follow our guidelines as well. If they're like, this one's not ready for that job, but it might be ready for this, they'll put them into that. So we've also paired up with many, many different places within the community for job programs as well. And then we have the Harm Reduction and Relapse Prevention. So we are continuously talking. The very regular piece in our days that we're talking about, how are you doing? How are the cravings? You know, what did you use? What can we lower? All that kind of stuff. And then the family, you know, families, we get them back together and, and work with both sides.
But like my parents had no idea what I was going through, what my life was, and they just hated me. So when they hated how it turned out and, you know, they had no idea what was going on or why. And that's where these guys came in and like, you know, they didn't know some of my trauma. They didn't know why the, the way I lived. And these guys were able to help them understand and even help them mitigate my, which level I was at and where I was at with everything. And yeah, it was without them talking to my parents, it would not have worked because it didn't, that beginning until they really took in and listened to these guys. And they're sovereign. They were sovereign. My parents, my parents. Sovereign and not listening and not knowing and not wanting. They're all right, but these guys were able to get, just to get through to my parents and you.
So we are supportive services. So we are 24/7 for the Professional Outreach and Trauma Response Team. We do de-escalation and behavioral intervention. With that, I want to say like, we work really, really closely with the RCMP at this point in time. So we have lots of meetings with them. They let us know kind of who's on their radar, who could really use the help, who they should put back on the radar. No, no, not now.
No, 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 no.
Contact us and just say, hey, how are these people doing? Should we have them on the radar? Should we be watching them on the streets, right? So we have that. We also have the de-escalation where they will call us out to a 911 call, knowing that they're one of our clients and to come in and de-escalate. And what do we do? What do we do? Because it's a balance of, is this illegal activity or is this a mental health condition? With us, we talk to the whole team. So we are pretty good at navigating which direction we need to go. So we work really closely with those guys. So we do have addiction doctors and nurses and Alex can speak for that. They are actually outreach, we've partnered with them. So I've actually had Jennifer from them, the Hudson Addiction Building, call me and say, we can't do this, can you do this? And I'm like, absolutely. On a long weekend, within, what was it, like three hours, I had the medication in and everything going. So, and so I just have, I don't know why, but there's, we've partnered with these addiction doctors and they are, I can text them and within 15 minutes, they're responding and asking if it's an emergency and how fast we need to move. This has been fantastic.
They're from all over.
They are from.
They're not even just, like, they're none of them are from here.
None of them are here. They're all Vancouver, Kelowna, Ollia Island.
From the island, yeah. I call them Dr. Mears.
Yeah, Dr. Mears.
They tell us if she was.
If she's having panic attacks or really strong cravings, we can get ahold of them and they can send a prescription in. There's other things like you've needed blood work and different scans and different tests for different situations.
Cäsia, which is in.
Yeah, and they can order that in immediately too. So we just kind of bypass the public health system and they're, yeah, so it's great. So we've, yeah, definitely cleared up with them. We have the peer support membership. She is one of them. So lots of them that have come along and are, are sober now and, and doing that, they mentor the other ones as well to, you know, you can do this, you've got this. We've got the criminal lawyer. We've got Indigenous culture connections, legal and justice system liaisons. So that's where they mandate lots of people to us. We are in port almost every morning. They're helping and supporting. Food security and transportation, so no matter, if they have an appointment in Cranbrook, we're going to take them to Cranbrook. If they have, it doesn't matter what they need, we are there for them. If they cannot access food or even if the food bank is short, the company will take our funds and put it towards them and make sure that they're fed through the whole place. Our team is registered trauma and addiction counselors. We've got the two, that I believe they're the only two in Preston that are registered. So we've got both of them. We've got registered nurses and licensed practical nurses that are looking for us. We've got addiction physicians, those are outreach ones. We've got licensed care aides, licensed addiction support workers, mental health and addiction specialists, criminal lawyer, behavioral intervention, like anger management, all those kind of pieces. We've got our peer support workers, outreach and housing navigators, and registered emotional support animals. So Tanya has horses. How many horses do you have? I have four. Four. So she's got four. She does therapy with those and our individuals. And we've got a registered support dog that goes around to everybody and Alex hates when she has to give her up.
Whenever you're back out of her trainer, she's still really young, but she loves it.
So she goes.
Even knows, like, even if, like, say I have a friend over and he's not feeling very good or something, she'll go instead of be on my side, she'll go to him. She's already, she's only six months and she's already really good at her drug.
Yeah, yeah. So she's still in training and she's doing amazing. So right now, we're in the middle of purchasing a facility. So it's 21 private rooms, seven kitchenettes, common lounge and kitchen area, common outdoor patio. We'll have a dedicated medical room specifically for the nurses and, and they'll do weekly checks through everybody who is there. Dedicated counseling and group support rooms, six professional offices, which we're hoping to get, we work very close with Dr. Gron and Jennifer, so we're hoping that they will come. we're hoping to get, we work very close with Dr. Gron and Jennifer, so we're hoping that they will come to us rather than us keep going to their office. Um as well as probation, forensics, all those kind of things. So we're really hoping that it's just a big hub for all the professionals. Um it's a large reception area, a waiting area, um it's got laundry facility and then we have our community garden and outdoor space. So right now, our um partners are the RCMP, probation officers, forensic psychiatry services, BC Mental Health and Substance Use, uh Provincial Health um Service Authority, First Nations Health Authority, Interior Health, Mental Health and Addiction, um Interior Health Social Workers, Interior Health Case Managers. Um we've got BC Victim Services, that's our newest one that we've been going through. Um and we've got the criminal lawyers, um yeah, so, oh, correct, we have patient Cranbrook probably, yeah, inpatient and outpatient psychiatry facility. So we actually are in charge of most of the, or a part of, that um anybody coming out of psych from Cranbrook into the community, we are asked to join so that we can monitor them and keep them on. Um DDMH is um like emergency mental health, so we work so closely with Elaine. You're always talking to Elaine. Um CLBC is what we're still waiting for. We're just about, you know, still we're told, just about finalize with that. Um WorkSafe BC, we are BC rural and remote bringing home society, so we are working with them right now, trying to get um some help with funding, financial support to be able to help that many more people. Um BC Parliamentary Affairs, we've been back and forth with them so much, they are trying to get every ounce of funding they can for us so that we can continue to grow and expand and all of that. So they are very much a part of this. Um Creston Valley Chamber of Commerce and different um yeah, different leaders and federal MPs. We've just been all over there. We're getting called in every direction to come and present and talk to us for sure. So our impact and outcomes, like we are hoping to serve a hundred and fifty clients annually over with a sixty-five percent completion rate. Um increase family and housing stability so that they can reconnect, um decrease ER and RCMP visits and other emergency services. I think that they are very utilizing us very, very much right now. Like, we we definitely have decreased emergency room visits and RCA incinerations. And everything else, like, yeah, we definitely decrease that, so. So right now, serving, we're in Creston. Um we have been called to Nelson, we've not been there yet. Um Trail and Castle are, are through our lawyer that he is just trying to get us down there. Um we are in, just starting in Cranbrook, um and then outreach into Inverness. So um our future growth is to expand satellite outreach teams, secure long-term provincial and federal funding. Um that's kind of our biggest pullback at this point is the funding. So everything that we do, I'm just gonna say, right now I'm in the middle of remortgaging my house to get the down payment to purchase that facility I was talking about. So it is affecting me personally, but we believe so much in what we are doing and we have seen the impacts. We have seen it. We have gang members, we've got massive drug dealers, we've got, and they're all part of this right now. We've got them in our program. So lots of them have hidden identities. We cannot say it's dangerous for them. So we cannot say their names, we cannot, you know, all those kind of things. So we're just watching the impact on all these individuals right now and we just strongly believe what we're doing. So I'm in the middle at twenty-eight. I go sign the document to remortgage my house, to take all my equity out, to purchase this building in town, to start voting. So just so you know, that's where we're at. We'd like to help, but we're gonna continue going without it. So that's where we're at. Um we would love to increase indigenous culture and programming. I am not Aboriginal, but my whole entire family, my husband, all my kids. Um I am, been a foster home in this community for Tenaha for a really long time. Um as my kids were growing up, I had um all indigenous and high risk. So it was all behaviors, the ones that couldn't go into group homes. They were shipping children for me from um Saskatchewan, trying, you know, to do this. So I definitely have experience in it, but we would love to increase that awareness. Um to bring us to a point, we have an individual that is reaching out to us right now from First Nations. Um this individual is begging and pleading for help. We went to their um office, we were talking to them, they're like, we don't have money. So we gotta hold uh First Nations Health Authority, they'll give us all the money, we have a bed. Um and this person is literally, if you can dream it, this person's on it. So it's fentanyl, meth, meth, what else? What do they say?
Okay, weed.
Crack?
Yeah, they were alcohol.
And weed. Yeah, it was everything. So um yeah, definitely through trial right now, all the whole nine yards, you know, there's a court case, there's all these things where we have the lawyers, we've got the support, we've got everything, we don't have the funding. So it's, we are like skirt, like just scrounging right now for that. There's another individual, um severe alcoholic, severe, severe. And this individual can't afford anything. And so right now, I partnered this individual, we've been donating our hours at this point. Um but I partnered this individual with another work um business within the organization. Um because it's an alcoholic, it's a high risk for any kind of job. So we've got like ground crews, so it's like shoveling dirt and whatever, just to try to get him a little bit of money so that maybe he can, you know, give back to us eventually. But, you know, we need him to have a purpose and have some income and all those kind of things. So that's kind of where we're at with that individual, which breaks our heart because we do have a full-on team. But we cannot be putting other people out and expecting them to do it for free. So that's kind of where we are. We're doing exactly what we can with, with us. Um so trying to put our heads together. Um and we really appreciate being invited.
Being invited and creating the community network. So how do we make this work? How do we better individuals? How do we better our society and?
We need to wrap up your presentation for some council questions and then.
Absolutely.
Any questions from that token?
Where is the facility that you're looking to?
So right now, um we're in the works of, and we might not be able to do that one. We've got a couple, but um the Sunset Motel is in the Southwest. They want one point three five million at this point. So I have to re-mortgage my house, I have to get four hundred and fifty thousand. I bought my house eleven, twelve years ago, so I do have the equity in my house. Um but that's where I'm getting it from. I wrote bank a point on the twenty-eight to try to put the down payment on that to get it going. So um that's one. The other one that we were thinking about is the U room. So it's seven hundred thousand. We can, if I put a hundred thousand into it, um then we have our, I still have my down payment for my house. And so I have my down payment and a hundred thousand to be able to put in to create beds and rooms within that facility. There's a house at the back, we can use that other house. So those are the two options that we have right now.
Yeah, Bruce, incredible. In nine months to be where you are now. I was trying to figure out where you came from, but you've described some of the stuff with your. Are there other funding sources besides, is it because you're a for-profit organization that you can't go to like Creston Foundation and stuff like that?
We're a corporation. So in order to do it um adequately with the liability that we need to have, we had to be a corporation. So not one charity or anything could even come close to our liability.
I thought that.
Yeah.
Anyway, congratulations. It's stunning.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Councilor Hart.
This is really very impressive. Uh you talked a little bit in in the information that you shared with us about the different, different types of treatment modalities that you're looking at. Um are you, um, how do I say this? Like, are you underneath kind of an umbrella organization around um this is how rehab would look and this is how we'll deliver it? Or are you really just case by case and figuring out what works for that individual?
We find.
By case, I'd say.
Yeah. So we really, um we do extensive interviews at the beginning. What, what did you like to do? Where would you like to be? How can we assist with that? Um and I really like, everybody has a different drug that reacts differently. It, how much their intake is, is completely different. So where we need to be, we just don't feel that one person fits, or every person that don't want. Does that answer your question?
Um sure, yeah. Yeah, it's good. I mean, like, there's the AA Red Step Program, there's the, there's the campaign and all that.
For example, AA works for one individual and the other one, as soon as they go in to do the intake, they're like, been there, tried that, done that, hard no. Okay, well, let's be a little bit curious again. How can we navigate through this? Now, having said that, may I use you again?
Yeah.
All of a sudden, she, you were a no.
I wasn't.
However, now that she's clean and sober, a friend came up to her and says, do you wanna go to AA? You know what? Maybe I can.
Well, excuse me to some of the, once under the AA umbrella, she's me to some of it. And instead of being a part of the whole AA program, he's navigating me through some of the things I've been curious.
Right, yes. So I guess what, to answer your question a little more, if we, if we keep our blinders on, that this is the way it has to be, we're not gonna help everybody. So we're just really empathetic and open and honest and going, hey, this might not work now. But if we're open and free to your suggestions, it always comes through. It always rolls through. I don't know if that.
I mean, my plans changed a few times.
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah, we had to readjust the treatment plan.
Yeah, that's not working. We thought it would work. Let's readjust.
Yeah.
Yeah, and and sort of one more thing, that's what life is. We, we always think that if I do ABC, XYZ, that will happen?
Nope.
So we're all, we're always the flow.
And I just wanted to ask as well, um so started October first, I I'm thinking you were probably fairly informal before then.
Absolutely.
Um so the PowerPoint projecting about a hundred and fifty clients a year, and you've got twenty-one employees right now?
Uh I think it's more twenty.
We're gonna have to get along.
Yeah, and we have waiting lists, yeah.
I'm just curious, like, in, right now, today, um roughly, what is the number that you're able to provide services to? Like, are you, is it kind of like twenty-five, like a one-on-one? Or a bigger client base than that?
We are, we have a lot of availability. So lots of our people, um like our staff, um we only allow two people, one a heavy case and one a light case. So what that looks like and what that means is the, and when someone is coming off the streets and just not sober yet, we're trying to get housing, that's a heavy case. Um and then someone like Alex now, who is, you know, being a mentor, that's a light case. So but it could switch tomorrow. Like, let's be, let's be real, it's happened before, right? So um yeah, so it's, we try to only do two people in what you've got. Um yeah, we're light and heavy. And then, but we have other people that are very experienced in the industry that has three or four people that they meet in a week. So we have seven days um in a week. We're twenty-four hours a day. And then we just say, whatever you can fit in.
And your lawyer and and um doctors are out of community, but are the rest of your um workers here in town? And so we really are Creston-centric right now with Creston.
Yeah, absolutely. It's all Creston right now.
Okay.
Yeah.
Your questions?
Well, then, quiet little organizations.
We kind of see some of the negative effects on other organizations and we're like, we're just gonna slide down. We're just gonna be quiet.
Doctor Dumas.
I'm just uh curious, um what your relationship is with the Den Society and how, are you partnering or?
No, we have, we have not spoke to the Den Society at this point. I think we have two different views. Um we are very much not about, and you know, Alex has said this too, we're not about enabling. Like, and not saying that that's a bad thing. We're about rehabilitation. So it's not the same at all. Um yeah, I think, yeah, so we just want them to get better. They cannot, we've actually had to fire clients because they would not give up the last four beer on that day, right? And we're like, we're not here for this. We've got other people that are wanting to get, get better and when you're ready, call us. Yeah.
You have a different mandate.
Yeah, we have to interview each and every person.
Thank you very much for your presentation.
Any guesses on what we?
Thank you. You're not obligated to stay, but you can stay if you like. I would then request a motion that council receives the delegation from Enduring Care Solutions. Respect them their core programs. Recommendations, sorry. Okay, so next is council, council direction request from the Director of Boy Active Services regarding to take action on REVA.
Thank you, Russian Council. I was just having an opportunity to participate in a um program where we can offer radon test kits throughout the community. Uh it's a free program, but um doesn't cost anything. So you could get the kits and then um take them back, send them out for evaluation and get results. Um the uh the way the program works, there'll be some admin time that we'd have to do this. Um and so Asher would um, you know, take a key role in that, take it, take some of her time to do that. We would, the plan would be to administer them through Town Hall, you know, through an education program and then residents can come and ask and do the paperwork to 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 get it done. And so if council uh so wishes, we can um, you know, get that program implemented and uh have a start for this fall. And it runs for um, you know, approximately three months and then some data is collected and we can go further.
Councilor Hart.
Um so in reading the report you shared with us, um so I'm, I'm aware of situations where there are radon. Um 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 homes that have tested positive for radon. So I'm just curious what our responsibility is. Um because it looks like, when I look up online, um we don't have mitigation companies in town and mitigation can be anywhere from five hundred dollars to twelve thousand dollars. And so if we are giving out free kits, um but our message back is, but you don't have to address it until you sell your house. Um we're also acknowledging the increased risk of lung cancer for people that are living in a radon, um high radon house. So what is our liability to give out kits, come back and say, oh, hey, guess what? You're.
Right, so we're, we're offering uh, uh for those that may be interested in that, here's uh an opportunity to gain some awareness and um you know, you're absolutely right. There's no uh mitigation companies locally. Um you know, so, so not, we're, we're not in the business of, you know, starting any sort of mitigation process or anything like that. It's strictly, you know, an awareness campaign and an opportunity so that people can, you know, get some information and then they have to make a decision as to what they'd like to do with that information. Ray Asha has a comment.
Uh just out of that, there aren't any mitigation companies locally in Preston, but they do exist in Illinois and will do the workings.
Yeah.
I like the fact that there were options to buy the kits, and they're cheaper than they are on eBay. We looked into it as well. They were quite expensive there. Um but there's actually one that's like less expensive when you add in shipping altogether. It's about the one that's fifty-three dollars, I think, is the cheapest ultimately. But rather than people go, well, how do I qualify? I'll never qualify, I'll never get that, that kind of thing. Um it might also be worth saying, stressing that there are kits available. Start with the price. Because people don't know, they won't get that far down into it. And sometimes you have to look fairly far into it. Um but my bigger thing is, will we somehow do a, a sharing of the results? I mean, maybe this area doesn't have a lot of radon issues, but we're talking to a realtor who said, you're wrong. When, when you test right, you know, and you do need to put them down and you need to leave them in for a while. You just can't walk around with a radon receiver. It doesn't work that way. Um but that's what's available online. You want.
Yeah, no, absolutely. I mean, like, I don't know what the uptake would be. I mean, we could definitely put them in the facilities and understand, you know, what uh what the town of Creston building is. You know, it looks at, it can, you know, totally have that information. The, the kits that are handed out as part of the program is You know, it looks at, it can, you know, totally have that information. The, the kids that are handed out as part of the program is there to, to come back. Uh, that's part of the administration is they come back in three months and then they're sent off to a lab to be, to be assessed. And, and, uh, you know, it'll give us a, a, a report of, you know, the.
So we'll get it, that's collected. We'll get the report. And then to pass back to them.
And, and then, yeah, presented to, to council and, you know, becomes public record and all that stuff, so.
Yeah. Couldn't, couldn't see any negatives on that anytime. It's a big grace.
So the recommendation before us then is that the report titled Take Action on Radon Program Dated June twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-five, from the Director of Corporate Services, they received for information. And that council direct staff prepare the request for decision regarding the take action on radon program For council decision at an upcoming council meeting. Good with that? Good, because I'm interested in what's happening in my basement.
Thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you.
So a motion then that council rises from committee of the whole. Councilor, please, second to council Aries, all in favor? And we'll continue with a, a council meeting then with division reports, uh, first from corporate administration. Requests for decision from the Director of Corporate Services regarding the appointment of the interim Director of Finance.
Thank you, Your Worship. So as council's aware, under the community charter, there are two officer positions that legislated that you need to have filled. One is for corporate administration. So that's your corporate officer. And the other one is your financial officer. With that role being held by the Director of Finance currently. With his vacancy coming up To ensure that we have fulfilled our obligations under the community charter, We need to appoint a Director of Finance to make sure that those duties are completed. So the recommendation before you for today Is that Mike Moore, the Chief Administrative Officer, be appointed as the interim Director of Finance To fulfill the responsibilities of the financial officer In accordance with section one forty-nine of the community charter and the town of Creston officers and employees by law. So this would just be until we have successfully recruited a new director position and then we will appoint them.
And just for your information, I spoke to C E O Moore on the phone before this meeting. Um, he doesn't anticipate it to be a large workload because the work that we're doing, um, right now And before we hire a new, um, financial officer, it's not overwhelming. It's, it's basically maintaining the course we're on without adding to it. So he doesn't anticipate it's a great deal of work. Uh, he feels that with some, uh, good luck and, uh, recruiting, we may only have to wrap this, We can wrap this up by September perhaps or not much later. And I also, um, Ran the suggestion of remuneration by him. He feels that, uh, at this point, he does not need extra Remuneration to do this job. And if something changes and it becomes a larger burden, we will review all that, I think. And so, um, Having said that, I, I will, I think that answers some of council's questions, but not all of them. So I'm.
If there are some additional questions about remuneration employees, that would be referred to closed.
That was my question before, Lisa. I, I, I would bring it up.
As it stands though, we do need to have someone appointed to that position. So organizationally, the chief administrative officer is the only one currently who can fill it. Any other items we'd like to discuss, we can refer to closed and say nothing valuable.
I was okay.
Any other questions?
Um, I, I think I do have a couple of questions that I can ask here. Um, although I do agree, we may need to shift. Um, I guess for me, um, generally my concern, um, is around, um, Our CEO's current list of responsibilities. And so we know he's, um, Assumed quite a large role within the housing corporation, um, with a plan not to Um, shift those responsibilities away from him until next year. Um, and so a lot of work happening there. And my understanding, um, just in reading the reports, So, um, members that are on that, um, corporation can clear that up. But it looks to me like maybe, um, some of those, um, what's the word I want to use? The financial, um, Policies, um, And the, all of the accounting, setting up, you know, receiving granting dollars, getting Um, building loans, all of that is going to fall into that role as well. So I'm just, I have a concern with, um, A lot of accounting needing to occur with somebody without an accounting background. And I mean that.
So I'm actually gonna stop it. I think we'll refer this to post.
Okay.
And we can address all those concerns or do you have responses for all of them? But I prefer we should not talk about that outside. Okay.
Okay, so the motion then is that the report Title Intern Director of Finance from the Director of Corporate Services dated June twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-five be received. And further, that Mike Moore, Chief Administrative Officer, be appointed as the interim Director of Finance To fulfill the responsibilities of the financial officer in accordance with section one forty-nine Of the Community Charter and the Town of Creston Officers and Employees Bylaw, number one nine two five, twenty twenty. That's the motion, moved by Council Baldwin, seconded by Counselor Harton. Discussion? All in favor? Motion is carried. Thank you. So the next then is request for decision from the Chief Administrative Officer Regarding Creston Valley Housing Corporation Director Appointment, Staff Director.
So I can speak through this phone as well, Your Worship? So again, with our Director of Finance's vacancy on the Creston Valley Housing Corporation, the town has four director seats, Three of which are elected officials and one is town staff. So in filling that role, organizationally, our Director of Community Services, Joel Comer, has the capacity to take that on at this time. Um, it was distributed the staff to see if anyone was interested in it. Joel Comer was the only person interested currently given our workload. So the recommendation at this time is that, um, Stefan Klassen, Director to the Creston Valley Housing Corporation, Um, his appointment be rescinded effective immediately and resignation has been given to that board, so they are aware. And that Joel Comer be appointed as Director to the Creston Valley Housing Corporation. And so you can read. So his appointment would be until, consistent with the rest of the directors until after the next election. So October twenty twenty-six. It's coming up quick, you guys.
So there's two motions connected to this. The one that's in our printed agenda and one that, uh, was distributed before the meeting.
Yeah, so they're actually separate items. So we'll manage this first and then only let's on to the next one.
Sure. So we will go with the motion that the report titled Appointment of Board of Directors Staff Dated June twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-five from the Chief Administrative Officer be received for information. That the appointment of Stefan Klassen as a Director to the Creston Valley Housing Corporation Serving in the capacity of Town Staff Director as defined in the Creston Valley Housing Corporation Articles of Incorporation Be rescinded, effective immediately. And that Joel Comer be appointed as Director to the Creston Valley Housing Corporation Serving in the capacity of Town Staff Director as defined in the Creston Valley Housing Corporation Articles of Incorporation, effective immediately. And further, that the appointment of Joel Comer as a Director will cease at the first annual general meeting After the next municipal general election in October twenty twenty-six. Could be held within one hundred eighty days after the municipal election. But such directors are eligible for reappointment. Go motion to Counselor Iser, seconded Counselor Dumas. Discussion? That are all in favor or discussion?
That's a discussion, sorry. Um, I mean, I almost, um, I wonder about an amendment, um, just thinking When I look back at our notes from our January twenty-eighth meeting, when we appointed Stefan to the Housing Corporation, We had identified that, um, he was, he was key in that role because he was the CFO. And that the startup of the corporation, that was the really big focus on getting a solid foundation For the corporation. I appreciate a new hire, um, Needs time to, to understand the organization as well. But I wonder if there isn't value in amending it to as such time That, um, the new CFO is able to assume that workload as well.
You know, I think at this point, my recommendation to council would be to leave it as Joel Comer. Just for that reason, to give the Director of Finance time to come up. It is something that can be revisited as time goes on. Um, the Director of Finance, whoever they are, will still be involved with the Creston Valley Housing Corporation Because, uh, right now we have our books and they're responsible for that. And there is a lot of, um, we work together, right? So all of those decisions still get played with support of Director of Finance. So my recommendation would be to leave it as it stands, then Director of Finance in place. And then if we would like to revisit it, we can revisit it and we'll play that with the Chief Administrative Officer.
It has a method of learning. The new CFO is welcome to attend those meetings, uh, as they progress. And so, um, he or she would like to be part of it anyhow, because they will be eventually appointed. So I would, I would assume that they would want to attend meetings just to see what we're not learning soon. Okay, all in favor of the motion? Motion is carried. Thank you. So the second motion in connection with this report then Is that, uh, it has resolution four forty-one dash twenty-two from the inaugural council Meeting of November eighth, twenty twenty-two, establishing signing authorities for the town of Creston as follows. That council appoints Mayor Arnold DeBoon, Counselor Baldwin, Counselor, Michael Moore, Chief Administrative Officer, Stefan Klassen, Director of Finance, Corporate Services, and Kirsten Dunbar, Corporate Officer as signing authorities for the town of Creston for the remainder of twenty twenty-two To the end of council's, uh, present term in, in office in, in two twenty twenty-six. Um, be, be, be resolved that council appoints Joel Comer, Director of Community Services As signing authority for the town of Creston until the end Of the present council's term in twenty twenty-six. And further, that Stefan Klassen, Director of Finance be removed As the town of Creston signing authority effective July fourth, twenty twenty-five. Motion to? Counselor Holland, seconded to Counselor Baldwin. Discussion? Oh, it's favored? Motion is carried.
Thank you.
Stefan, we don't really like it that you're leaving. We like everyday service. And as of July fourth, um, Your name's not on anybody's checks after that. Yeah.
It's a significant loss.
Mayor Calcigar was asking me if we're mad at her. I could probably say yes.
You can pull it back. You can come back.
So, uh, next is finance requests for decision from the Director of Finance Regarding the Statement of Financial Information for twenty twenty-four. Steph, see your job not done yet?
Not quite. So, um, I, the, uh, SOFI report is, uh, statute required, must be filed, uh, by the end of June annually. Uh, the one pertains to the twenty twenty-four fiscal year. There's a financial statements, statement of remuneration, uh, the, uh, statement of, uh, Severance agreements, which we have none. It's, it's also disclosure of, uh, payments over twenty-five thousand to different parties. There's, um, Disclosure of any guarantees, which we don't have any. Um, uh, so there's, you know, there's a number of, uh, different disclosures that are not included in The financial statements. The financial statements are also included because, uh, as part of SOFI, it lays out a number of things That need to be disclosed, but, but the vast, vast majority are included in our financial statements. And so, um, if council has any questions regarding the SOFI report, um, I'd be willing to answer those.
Any questions? We opted not to have that as a lengthy PowerPoint on our council meeting because it is on the agenda Available to us and also to the public as, but as per the agenda. So, um, if we have all the time in the world to review it, if we hadn't already done so. So I would then, um, Ask that the report titled Council's Approval of the Twenty Twenty Four SOFI Report Dated June twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-five from Director of Finance. And that council approves the twenty twenty-four Statement of Financial Information For the town of Creston. And further, that council authorizes the mayor and Director of Finance and Corporate Services To sign the Statement of Financial Information Approval As per Financial Information Regulation Schedule One, subsection nine, sub-two of the Financial Information Act. So that's the motion, moved by Counselor Dumas, seconded to Counselor Aries. Discussion? All in favor? Motion is carried. So you still got time to sign a few things there, Steph?
Yeah, yeah.
So, request for decision from the Director of Finance regarding the twenty twenty-four annual report.
Thank you, Your Worship. Uh, the annual report has been, uh, available, uh, online, um, and, uh, Reviewing at the Town Hall, uh, for the past two weeks. We'll also advertise this, that the annual report. Um, we've requested feedback from the public. We actually didn't receive any. Uh, but it is a very good document. I encourage everybody, uh, you know, spend their time to read it. It does Lay out what our activities were and our accomplishments were for twenty twenty-four. It also includes, uh, the financial statements, um, and, uh, a number of interesting facts And numbers that, um, you know, explain things about what we do in the town. And so, uh, this is something that we also need to have, uh, Prepared and done by the end of June, uh, uh, per the community charter as well. So this is, you know, also Uh, meaning legislative requirements. There's any questions regarding the annual report?
We now, now request a motion that the report titled Adoption of Twenty Twenty Four Annual Report for the Town of Creston Dated June twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-five from the Director of Finance be received. And that council adopts the Town of Creston Twenty Twenty Four Annual Report as presented. Motion to Counselor Baldwin, seconded to Counselor Aries. Discussion? All in favor? Motion is carried. Okay, a request for funding from Fields Forward and the Creston Valley Food Action Coalition for Taste of Creston Valley on July First, twenty twenty-five.
Thank you, Your Worship. Um, I actually might pass this over to Counselor Dumas. Um, they are funding, so the Creston Valley Food Action Coalition is about to begin on July first. And they're requesting fifteen hundred dollars from the mayor's discretionary grant. The mayor has two thousand dollars in his discretionary grant. And later on in the agenda, there's also a request for the use of a food thing for the event. Something to add.
It was a very last minute event that we, uh, as a Taste of Creston Committee Put together. We just started asking the question of Without doing, because fireworks aren't going to be a thing in the future because of the Potential fire bans and we need to order fireworks six to eight weeks beforehand. And we don't have proper facilities to store those fireworks. If there's a fire ban, they need to be humidity and temperature control. And we don't have that. And also those fireworks could expire within, um, six months. So asking the question, is there something we could do within the town of Creston that could be a little bit different? That maybe moving forward could be a tradition for, for our community? Uh, remembering that the Canyon Hall Association do a fundraiser every year And put on Canada Day celebrations and so does Ryan Dell and Yak. And I believe they're actually putting off fireworks. So wondering what could we do in our community and thinking, um, something that also We could invite the Yakanniki community to and, and, and have them involved. And so the Taste of Creston will be an international food Market. Tasting event that will run at a Kute Park from four to eight P M. And hosted by Fields Forward. Uh, so far we have nine international folks. And Yakanniki have said that they will bus in their community members. And we are offering them free of charge food. So we're very excited to have this as an inaugural event. Uh, we're hoping to be able to build on this. Uh, fire service will show up and hopefully if it's nice and hot, they spray us down. There'll be games and things for children to do. So just something for, for community members who cannot maybe get out to Canyon Park Or to Ryan Dell or to Yak, to that they can have, um, a community event. So it's the Taste of Creston, uh, celebrating our community.
So before we do that, uh, Counselor Baldwin, do you want to pitch your part of this? Because you You're a key ingredient in having a Canada Day.
We, I think the nice thing about it is we've got something for everybody now. We were facing Two weeks ago, we were facing a, a, a real drought of choices. Um, so Canyon will provide something for families midday up until early afternoon. Um, the evening will be a very sensory experience with, with the, the food. I won't be able to make it. I'll still be taking down my part of things. Um, I'll miss that. Um, but for five hours, uh, at the community center, We'll be doing a multimedia and business, uh, showcase, uh, that's going to celebrate as much Happiness and beauty that comes in, in from the public in Creston, uh, that's private and commercial, uh, A little bit of everything. So there'll be sound and video and stills and artwork, the art. When we were at the presentation the other day, the Arts Council went. Um, but unfortunately, as we're also raising up very quick.
Um, but unfortunately, as we're also raising up very quickly, this is a big thing. It would normally take five people, five weeks to do in like, um, four to five days. But, uh, it's going to be fun and, um, uh, great support from the, um, community complex, um. It's, it's very doable. Unfortunately, the Chamber of Commerce kind of sort of, I don't want to, they, they just got into this late. And unfortunately, the notice to the business community just went up sack me. So that's, that's like a week and a half less than I counted on, but hopefully everybody's reading their email and going, yeah, I wouldn't do that. Anyway, so that's, uh, a, a free event and it doesn't cost anybody. Anything didn't cost the town, anything doesn't cost. And from that point, I'm, I'm hoping also that it could be an annual thing. I'm, I'm prepared to do it again. But this time with lots more notice because I want to make sure that people have a chance to go. We've got these great pictures, the great videos and stuff like that, and they'll make people laugh or cry or whatever. That's the goal.
So the story out of this will be all the town of Creston saved Canada Day. I think it's wonderful that we, we have something going on because I, I think we're all really, uh, concerned about it not being something. So I really appreciate the work. That was done by councilors almost, and it's, it's really. As you said, it may be the start of something bigger and.
And something for everyone.
I really appreciate that. So with that, I will then say that, uh, request that council authorizes a grant. In the amount of fifteen hundred dollars from the mayor's discretionary grant. I need that motion. Council Isler, second to Council Aries, discussion. All in favor of the motion? Thank you. So we, we've also saved it with funding. Um, second then is, uh, or the next is Creston Valley Minor Hockey Association Community Development Grant. Application for One Hundred Years Sports, Sports Legacy Project in the amount fifty-five hundred dollars. And so. I don't know how much money we have, but.
Can you speak to that, Your Worship? Also, your Director of Finance just had to stand up.
I just wanted to say something in regards to Canada Day celebration funding. Um, there is a. An application process that can be done through the federal government. For celebration of Canada Day. Uh, that one was actually supposed to be applied by board chamber. That was supposed to be handed off and then they. Decided that they weren't going to do it and it's so, unfortunately, it wasn't applied for, for this year. So, um. I've, we've already lined up to, uh, do that application for next year's event. Um, so it should be about five thousand dollars available for these events. Did you get the flags? Usually we get a big, big box of flags. I, I don't, the visitor center said that, said you guys get a big box of flags and you get a big box.
Thanks, Steph. Request for funding for the, um, Hundred Years of Sports Legacy Project.
So actually, two items we might want to just consider together. So we have a request around the Ice Sports Legacy Project. And then another one from Fields Forward coming from the Community Development Grant, which administered through the R D C K. So for this year, we actually only have eight thousand two hundred and forty-nine dollars left in that fund to disperse. Um, the new allocation will be approximately thirty thousand dollars, but we don't have that yet. So it might be pertinent to. Um, maybe adjust the asks a bit so we don't overspend and go into next year. So with that, um, the Creston Valley Minor Hockey, Hockey League is looking at for five thousand five hundred dollars. We previously donated to this fund last year for this project in the amount of ten thousand dollars. So I'll leave that with you to discuss.
Okay, and I think that, I mean, the, the project is nearly complete, but the funding is not complete. So, um, they would very much like assistance in completing the funding. So just want to remind you of that before we decide on this. Anybody has an amount?
No, I just wanted to clarify. You said eighty-eight hundred dollars?
Yeah, eight thousand two hundred and forty-nine.
And when does that like cycle over to the thirty thousand?
We believe it's August. I was speaking with, um, central for this meeting, so we think August.
And if we don't spend the eighty-two plus, eighty-two hundred plus, does it carry over or is it wiped out? I mean, does it have any value?
It's carried over.
Council Baldwin?
Well, can't we just subtract it to them? Like just take the three thousand for, or, uh, feels forward. And that leaves us with fifty-two approximately. And then, then it's, it's, and it's a wash for now. And it's not far off from what they're asking.
That's what council would likely certain, okay?
So you suggest that would be my reason. Five thousand dollars? No, or no, fifty-two forty-nine, whatever the difference. So three thousand to it feels forward and then as per their, their C can. And then get from Creston Valley Minor Hockey, almost everything they want.
True. So the first, um, resolution that we council might consider is that council authorizes. A community development grant in the amount of five thousand two hundred and forty-nine dollars. To the Creston Valley Minor Hockey, Hockey Association for the One Hundred Years of Ice Sports Legacy Project.
She said it. You guys move it, eh, 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 to Baldwin, yeah, and Council Hutton. Uh, discussion. All in favor of the motion? Motion is carried. So, um, Fields Forward, um, as you see, it's there as well for the C can project for the amount of three thousand dollars. And, um, having that C can there will serve our community well for the people that are, are want to be. Party to that. And so there's four parties that, that will be using that C can. So I think everybody is aware of that. If you're not, please ask. So the motion then is that council, um, approve that grant for the amount of three thousand dollars. Motion two, Council Aries, second to Council Dumas, discussion. All in favor? Motion is carried. Here, we're just giving money away. Next is Community, Cutney Community Center Society, Stephanie Dunn. Executive Director Discretionary Grant Application to Support Farmers Market Nutrition Coupon Program for four hundred and thirty-two dollars. Anything to add to that, Kristen?
Nothing to add. So I believe council is aware of the nutritional coupon program here. So, um. Cutney Community Center Society is just hoping to fund an additional family to that program. For that amount, we do one hundred and thirty-two for the year. We have twenty-three hundred left in your discretionary grant budget. So. Up to you to determine the amount you're about to allocate.
This has been a recurring request too, isn't it?
It actually hasn't. This is the first time they've come forward for this specifically. We do provide them, um, grant funding for their daycare at the Creston Education Center, but we haven't funded this specifically.
Will entertain a motion, Council, Council Isler? For the amount? A motion is that the, we authorize the, the, the amount of four hundred and thirty-two dollars to include the Community Center Society. To support Farmers Market Nutrition Coupon Program, second to there, Council Aries, discussion. All in favor? Motion is carried. Alright, um, next is Community Services. Request for decision from the Director of Community Services. Regarding the Creston Valley Hospital Generator mural project. That's you, I believe, Natasha?
Your Worship? Um, so as council is aware, the town of Creston on behalf of the Public Arts. Working Committee recently received some grant funding through the Ready Program. Um, in total, it was just over three thousand dollars that was received in addition to the twenty-five hundred dollars that the town committed previously. Um. Since then, the hospital has indicated that their healing garden project, that this was kind of in support of. Um, has been delayed and they are no longer able to commit the, uh, twenty-five hundred dollars as previously anticipated. So the original grant request was seventeen thousand dollars. So we have, um, fifty-six hundred dollars at this point. Which does fall quite short of the original request. So given the available funding and the hospital's change in circumstance, staff on behalf of the committee are requesting a change in scope. Um, in order to still have a mural installed, uh, this year with the funding that's available. The main points and the changes in scope are moving, uh, the location of the mural to the west side of the former ambulance building. Which faces Tenth Avenue North and can be seen from Canyon Street. Um, to pursue one artist or a muralist team. Uh, which does reduce artists fees and to offer direct application of the mural, which significantly reduces costs. Um, the final wrap was anticipated to cost anywhere between ten thousand and fifteen thousand dollars, which is the bulk of that. Um, so the intention is really to maintain the theme and spirit of the mural, inclusive of Tanaha language and art inspired by our valley. Uh, we did submit, well, staff submitted, um, a change of scope request through the ready grant process. The only underfunded. Other funder was Area A, um, which didn't have any objections to the changes.
Questions? If following that, I would then, um, request a motion that the report titled Resident Directed. That change of scope request dated June twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-five from the Director of Community Services. To receive for information and further that council approves the resident directed change of scope. Extension request for the Creston Valley Hospital Generator Mural Project. Motion two. Council Aries, second to Council Dumas, discussion. All in favor? Motion is carried. Okay, so you're back with, with us again for this. You haven't gone anywhere.
Um, okay, so I think Council Denise spoke to most of this, but just a couple of things. So, um. Yes, there's booking in Akutni on Canada Day. Um, the area will be closed from seven to ten to allow the event to happen from. Four to eight. So pursuant to our town policies and bylaws, the applicant has provided a park booking application, proof of insurance. Um, and their special event outdoor fire and emergency safety plan. Um, one thing of note is due to the size of the event, the applicant is required to organize additional washrooms, additional. Or sorry, equivalent to one washroom for one hundred and fifty people. So this totals. Three washrooms in total, one of which could be at the visitor's center. That's indeed open and that has been communicated to that camp.
Okay, with that information, then I would request a motion that council receives the June twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-five request for decision. Title Taste of Creston Valley Open Booking Request. That council approves the open booking request for Akutni from. The Creston Valley Food Action Coalition on July first, twenty twenty-five from seven A M to ten P M for the Taste of Creston Valley. And further that council authorizes sponsorship of the Creston Valley Food Action Coalition. For the Taste of Creston Valley in the amount of two hundred dollars to be allocated from the council advertising budget. Motion two. Council Holland, second to Council Hutton, discussion. Council Baldwin?
Two questions, uh, will there be alcohol? And then the second thing is, will there be a, um, um, a, a cash? Point for the tickets purchased, anything like that? So in other words, will things be sold?
Yes.
So that, but they'll, they'll pay the individual, individual vendor, they're not paying.
So way that it's going to work at this point is that you can buy a ten dollar tasting. Ticket and then that will get you four, um, items.
So, but that is how it's going to be done. So it's not like there's a lot of cash points for, for concern.
Yes.
Okay, I'll, I'll remember the motion. Motion is carried. Alright, we're still here for the next one. Um, request for decision from the Director of Community Services regarding wayfinding.
The last year, staff presented a very long and lengthy report, uh, showcasing the. Creston Valley Cutney, uh, Lake Wayfinding Project. At this meeting, staff directed, or sorry, council directed staff. To come back with the final design number and type of signs to be manufactured for the town. So since then, staff have been working with Ion Consulting and the Economic Action Partnership to develop that signage. Staff have identified priority locations, mostly focused within the downtown core, key and few points. Um, into the town of Creston as well as our municipal trails. So as a follow-up to that, on June fourth, uh, staff conducted a site visit with the Ministry of Transportation, Transit and the E A P. To determine some of the feasibility of the entry point signs, which are located on M L T T lands. Um, during this meeting, um, the majority of the signs identified, um. By staff were not supported by M L T T. However, they did recognize that these are important wayfinding features for our town. So staff is going to continue to work. With them through a different program to get some signs installed into our key entry points into town. Um. However, they did provide some preliminary support for our town of Creston sign that's currently sitting in the shop. Um, to be installed at that highway three, highway three A junction on their lands. So that's good news there. Um, as for the signs located on our lands, um, the next steps are ordering the signs that are identified, um, on that map. Um, working with Ion after those signs are manufactured, um, to. Place the final design on the signs, including your directional information wording, all that type of thing. Um, and then once that's complete, we'll send the signs for printing, um, and then finally we'll install the signage. So it's a little bit more of a multi-step. Um, process than originally anticipated. Um, so that's why the recommendation is coming, well, for you. Just permitting staff to proceed with this project in terms of ordering the signage through E A P and working with Modi. Um, to install the Welcome to Creston signage.
Council Baldwin?
Quick one, um. It said something about being able, if there was more leftover room. Do you need a special approval to go back after that or is this, will this resolution cover that?
Sorry, yeah, I didn't touch on that. This resolution will cover that. Um, it's all through the E A P. So if there's additional budget left over. Um, then we have the opportunity to go back for another batch of signs, um. And we can, if council would like, we can definitely come back and identify, you know, those locations and types. Um, or this would be an opportunity to let staff kind of proceed.
Okay, so the recommended motion is that the report titled Wayfighting Signage. Dated June twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-five from the Director of Community Services be received. The council approves the design number and type of signs proposed by staff to be ordered by the Economic Action Partnership. That council directs staff to proceed with ordering additional wayfinding signage through the Economic Action Partnership. As can be accommodated by their remaining. Project budget and further that council directs staff to work with the Ministry of Transportation and Transit. To install Welcome to Creston signage in town entry point, point signage on ministry land. As determined through continued consultation with the ministry staff. Motion two. Council Aries, second to Council Hutton, discussion. All in favor? Motion is carried. Thank you, Natasha. Well, we have, um. Some deeper information items. Uh, I would then request a motion that council receives the following correspondence. Ministry of Housing and Municipal Affairs regarding changes to municipal liabilities, regulation and short-term capital borrowing. Minister of Housing and Municipal Affairs, Ravi Kalan, regarding implementation of a small-scale, multi-unit housing requirements. District of Coldstream, U B C N modernization on waste water regulation. Luat Armstrong, Letter to Mayor and Council Regarding Shelter. So those four items, um, any discussion, questions on any of them? Okay, so the motion made by Council Islam, second to Council Baldwin, all in favor? Motion is carried. We're down to our acting mayor's schedule. July, it's Council Holland. August, Council Aries. September, Council Baldwin. October, Council Dumas. And let's just, let's just put through this. Question for you. Any questions from the gathering? Yes, go ahead.
Can I have a comment about the Canada Day stuff for clarity's purposes as opposed to a question?
Yes, and I'm glad you, you stood up because I was, I had to ask you during that discussion and I did, so thanks.
No, that's okay. I just wanted to be super clear about in the fall. We had let Stephen know that we were not going to be taking on that project and therefore there was lots of time. For another organization or a person to apply for that funding. Just for clarity, because it sounded like we dropped a ball, make sure it's helping. That's awesome.
We were waiting for somebody to step up.
Okay, yeah, exactly. Okay, that's good. I just wanted to get that in there.
Yeah, and I think, um, coming out of this, we're, we will consider, um. The, uh, whole drone light show program for Canada Day and we, we would need to make sure that we. If we're going to do it to book it in time so that we actually get it. And so, um, I'm not sure exactly when we have to do that, but we need to keep that in mind so that, um. We're not too, oh, you're too right now?
Especially as it gets more popular. So, um, I'll make a note of that. So we can be looking forward to next year.
Yeah, and then we still have to find the money for it, but I think the first step is to ensure that we, we can.
Yeah, most recent hopes that we received were, were around eighteen thousand. So, um, probably a good thing to start about a year out.
So, um, if we can have that on upcoming agenda, so we can have council endorse that request and then we'll figure out the rest later.
Okay, no problem.
Steph, you're going to be off the hook for all that, so. Steph, you're gonna be off the hook for all that, so that's your bad. Any other questions? Hearing none, I would then request a five headed recess and then we will go into a closed meeting. So thanks for coming. Thanks for your contributions. Move by councillor Aries, second councillor Dumas. Councillor is in favor? Thank you, five minutes. Yeah.